All right, so first up on the work session and the only up on the work session is Mr. Allison. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I want to say it's nice to be out of the house. I got my negative result at 2:00 PM this afternoon. I'm like, I'm out of here.
We're glad to have you.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the options for providing new industrial rate based on the, for the rates here with the City of Fairhope. Kind of a couple of things. Why are we looking at this? Better to align the cost of service with providing that level of service to those types of customers. And then our current industrial rates are not competitive with our neighbors in order to attract smaller industrial commercials into our service territory. We're also proposing review of the electric rates in total for next fiscal year. I guess Council President has looked at some other options as well to find a funding source for that, so we're looking at that as well. In your packets, you'll see the current rate structure. We have our residential, commercial, industrial, schools, nonprofit, and then our nonprofit industrial. All we're doing is proposing going to a C1 and a C2, and then the industrial rate would be a new rate. So the current industrial I1 would revert to being called our large commercial rate, and then the new I1 rate would be our commercial rate. Part of that new rate structure, again, would be to any customer 1,000 kilowatts or more, so 1 megawatt or higher, would fall into this new industrial rate. If a customer hits that one megawatt of load for any interval, they're locked into that rate for the following 12 months. That way, it just keeps the paperwork at a minimum of switching back and forth between rates and things like that. And also better aligns the cost with what it costs us to provide service to those customers. The charges are 13.15 per kilowatt hour and 5.2 cents per kilowatt, and 5.2 cents per kilowatt hour are the two basic charges. Then in your packets, you'll see some comparisons, and hopefully you guys got all that information, with some of our local other public municipal utilities. It's very hard to compare any municipal against an investor-owned, just because they can configure their rates way differently than we're allowed to. But I have all those comparisons in there. And then also a couple of examples real quick as far as 1.5 megawatts and 150,000 kilowatt hours, followed by a 2.5 megawatt and million kilowatt hour customer. And you can see on there where those dollar amounts would end up. So I think I've shared all of this with you guys, and just kind of a refresher here, just to get it before the council. Again, just to better align our industrial rates with the, with our customers and what it costs us to provide that service and to be more competitive with our neighbors. So, and then, so the thing here is, what I wanted to do is get some direction from you guys. If you wanted us to go ahead and look at a proposal for next fiscal year, to include this in our rate structure, or the other option is to, since we're proposing a rate study, to go ahead and hold off and do it all as one during the next fiscal year. It's a little bit less favorable to change rates in the middle of a fiscal year, so that would be the only reason I would propose maybe doing this before we did the rate study. Again, but it's at your all's discretion. And then to, again, look at some of the possible funding sources for doing that rate study next year with our consultants. So with that, I would just like to get some feedback on what y'all would think, and if you want us to come back with a proposal and go through the ordinance process, or just kind of lump it in with the rate studies.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Personally, I'd like to do it with the rate study. Just have everything, you know, if we're going to change, just change everything at the same time. I was going to say the same thing, so.
Yeah, I mean, I see the benefits of doing it either way. A simpler way is to probably do it all together, and that gives us a little more time to, you know, see if there's any more data out there that persuades us one way or the other on this particular rate that you're talking about.
Right. I've worked with the consultants on the rate, so even if we wait till the study's done, I don't know. I wouldn't anticipate any drastic changes to the dollar figures, because I did work with them quite a bit on coming up with what it, what our recuperation is for that rate.
Yeah, and, I mean, your proposal, I think, was spot on, because it encapsulates a lot of the things that we talk about as far as our utilities are concerned. And then our goal is several different things, is to provide great service to our customers, number one. Second is to provide it at a cost that's fair to the consumer. Third is to provide it at a cost that is fair to the city, so that we are, number one, paying for the cost that it cost us to provide it, but also it is a business, and we want to be able to profit from that in some way. So finding that right balance is really what this is all about. And I think what your study has shown is that maybe some of those rates need to be maneuvered a little bit, and I think...
Yeah, we definitely need to look at the electric rates as a whole and do some adjustments there, and then come up with a good philosophy on how to structure our rate, our electric rates. But again, that'll be part of the rate study for next year.
Mr. Boone, you got any comment on this?
Not at this time. I know what y'all already said.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Anybody got any committee updates? I'll start with you, Jimmy.
I don't have a committee update, but I do have something that I wanted to walk onto the agenda, I guess, if necessary, and that was, we've got, I think, eight extra picnic tables, does that sound right, that we have in the city that we had when we were trying to do the dining out. And both Fairhope Rotary, Rotary Youth, and Fairhope Elementary West have asked for picnic tables, so I thought we could split the difference and lend four to each of those entities. And that would help them with some social distancing, some of their events.
All right. Not to, not to stir the pot, but should we offer, should we ask if any of our other local schools need tables also, so that we don't hurt feelings by giving it to one without offering it, at least some to the others? Assuming, Mr. McDowell, that we can give away picnic tables. I mean, I don't have any problem giving them to the two that have asked, but...
Something to consider, just, you know, the Fairhope Sunset, the Fairhope Rotary Youth, it's accommodating all ages. And they're, all of their picnic tables are falling apart. So, I mean, yes, we can, we built it, I think, internally, and if we can do more, I would love to support all the schools. But I think the direst need is at the Rotary, because they, you just have to go out there to see it. It's really, really, really bad.
Well, I think, I think we can put on the agenda to declare them surplus, and then how exactly, how many we have and how those are divvied up can be something that's decided internally, based on perceived need at this point, I think. Mr. Conners, you got anything else?
Yep, that's it.
Robert?
Kevin.
Kevin?
I have no meaning.
I don't either. All right.
We did have a traffic study done today. People in this town might want to consider slowing down a bit. They'll be bouncing their cars all over this fair city, because the speeds are going to get slowed down one way or the other. You can either choose to do it yourself, or we can make you bounce your cars on these calming devices we can install. I have found that out.
We did the study.
We're doing a study on different streets. Steve does a study on every street. Study indicates that we're putting calming devices. Once the, it's determined that there's more speeders than there are, as I call it, regular drivers. So slow down. Save the city and your car.
All right. No more committee updates. Do we got any department head updates? Feel free, step up.
I have two. One from Quail Creek Golf Course, and I'm told that the mayor's tournament went off very well, and everyone had a great time. The final numbers will be available tomorrow after the FIF representatives and our golf pro meet to complete the reconciliation. Traffic is very heavy at the course. We're anticipating to do 40,000 rounds by the end of this calendar year, and that's having been closed for six weeks and having 30 days of weather that we couldn't play in. So that's up quite a bit. Working with Brian Williamson, our new pro, we've identified some areas where we have been historically not doing as well financially as we could, and are developing plans and new procedures to correct these issues. For example, we are sorely overstocked in the pro shop, and we are having a sale, and we will continue to have sales to move merchandise out, so that we can loosen up cash to refresh our offerings and to purchase items in the future that better represent our target market. At the Fairhope docks, slips at F dock are open, and waiting for electrical work there to be completed. We're waiting on GFCI panel breakers to be delivered. They were on a four- to six-week delivery schedule, and we are just about at that point, so we're following up on that. So we anticipate those docks and the rest of the electric that we have for, have planned for this year to start moving forward. Slip D2 is open, but it is, it requires a small boat. That's always going to be a problematic slip, because it's in a corner, and it's very difficult to maneuver, so that would require a small slip. But other than that, we are full on the recreational side. We don't have any slips to give away. On the commercial side, we still have a few slips open, some of which need dredging and repair work before they are usable. And we are starting work finally on getting our dredging permit. Talking with Tom Hutchins, who's going to help us, provided the price is right, to apply for our dredging permits. We have 14 names on the waiting list for open slips, that's slips that are outside. We have 18 names on the waiting list for the 45-foot covered slips. We have nine names on the waiting list for the 60-foot covered slips, so Fairhope docks is the place people want to be. And we have 11 names on the waiting list for dry storage. 20% of our expected capacity is waiting for us to build. Other than that, things are going well.
Thank you, Lynn. Chief, how are you?
I am good. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Well, I don't have much of, any updates, but I do have a request as an add-on for the agenda tonight. Our department, the police department, has to have a review officer to handle any predisciplinary actions, and our current review officer is no longer available, Mr. Wayne Candy. So I was going to make the request and recommend that we add an additional or add a new person, which is Major Jimmy Milton, and he's with the Baldwin County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I think we have a resolution that's been given to us to add on, and I anticipate, I guess, after we discuss it, that we...
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Hello again. I just have the one, real quick, again, another add-on for the agenda for the unprotected natural gas services. We got those bids back last week, so...
All right. Mike, what you go ahead and tell us about this?
That's the second component that I've been talking to you guys about, as far as getting caught up with our Public Service Commission needed work that they're requiring us to do that we're behind on for compliance with them. So this is to get all that caught up by the end of the year. So the first part was the cathodic protection, and then this is about 325 unprotected services that we have to mitigate between now and the end of the year.
Counsel, any questions for Mike on this particular item?
Did we have a target amount that we thought, I'm just curious?
It was, the bids came back a little higher than I was expecting, but we kind of scrunched on time a little bit, so I can see why...
Well, those don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, we're kind of, we, we have to have 30% done to be within compliance for 2020 inspection. That'll happen in 2021.
Any other questions for Mike on this particular item? Y'all have another shot if we decide to add it.
Do you know why the other two did not respond to the bid?
When we were talking to them, they were very much on it, wanting to respond, but we didn't get anything back, and I haven't followed up on that. I've actually been out all week, so I've been trying to do most of this from home, but no, off the top of my head. And we, if we choose to try to negotiate with the one bidder, then we're adding more time to it, scrunching their timeframe between now and 12:31 even more.
If it's anything to consider, too, that this is something that is preventing fines.
Right.
So, you know, that's really the savings.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
I'd like to talk to you a little bit about debt. We have a utility warrant that was, we're able to redeem it. It was a 20-year. We've already paid into 10 years, and now it's, it has another 10 years of payments. But due to rates coming down, I see a opportunity. So what I want to be able to do is to put out to the local banks. We have 10 years left paying on this, and what I can tell in the market right now, we could reduce it by at least a percent, maybe a little more. We owe 12, 11 million, 935, so it's a significant amount that we could have some savings on. So I'm going to be working on, so, you know, in case you see that out there, just to be able to put some bids out to the local banks. This one is actually through Compass Bank, but I think it would be, you know, we should be able to get bids out and be some competition there to see what we can come up with. So, but I think it'd be a good savings. 95% of this debt is sewer, water and sewers, so that's good to have the savings on the water and sewers books.
Sure. Thank you.
Just want to kind of give you all an update. As y'all know, last week, we worked with GMC to remediate the fuel tanks there that were located at the corner of Fairhope and section. And every now and then, you do something, and everything goes as planned. And this was one of those cases where it probably went as smoothly as you could ask for. And so the tanks are out, and we've got the site backfilled. For the short term, we just planted some sod there just to green it up. We've got to let that area settle and weather in. Just a couple of important things to share with your constituents. We did make a decision to send the clock off to a paint shop. They're going to soda blast it and repaint it, because we think there was about 16 coats of brush paint on the clock, and we thought while we had it down, we'd take care of that. So we asked the paint shop to try to be as quickly as possible, but it could be, and as you know, with clocks, I don't have good luck. So we're thinking two, three weeks, but maybe four weeks before it's back, but it's going to look fantastic. Just kind of to know, part of this process is that the geologists took samples as we made the excavation. We will not have the results of that back until about two weeks, and then once we do, we'll be able to complete the permit work to go to ADM. Our goal is that we will get back basically a letter of complacency and that nothing else is required of us. That's kind of, kind of the goal. The material removed is currently secured and stockpiled at Public Works. Once we have the constituents report back from it, we can present that to Magnolia Landfield, and they will set the process for us to landfill and securely dispose of that. But it went extremely well, and just kudos to not only Public Works, but all those that assisted in making that project go so smooth. Thank you.
Richard, thank you. I mean, y'all did a great job in getting that done quickly. I mean, that's a tough spot to work on, and y'all did a great job. I did get several calls about Fairhope's new downtown croquet spot. Luckily, you had updated us, and I was able to assure them it was temporary, and so, thank you.
Well, James says we should put a Christmas tree there, so I mean, who knows?
I like the grass.
Not bad.
Okay, so we haven't talked about the National Park Service and our master connectivity plan in a little while. We have had to put all of that on hold for COVID and some actual staff issues there at National Park Service, but we're about to resume it. So that two-year program was about to end this fall. That will be extended at least six months to a year to be able to make up for the time that we lost from COVID. So that's exciting. But more exciting than all of that, so our Restore Sewer Project, we are ready to go. The bid's open for that on Wednesday, and our evaluation process, or we'll move through the first round evaluation process in the next 10 days. We expect to have the program administration selection recommendation to you guys for the next city council meeting, and then hopefully the evaluation process will go off without a hitch, and we will have the engineering recommendation to you guys by September 14th, or at the September 14th meeting. Councilman Boone is on that committee, and we're thankful to have him. It's going to, we're going to keep our deadlines and keep it moving. So, thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. All right. With that, we will close the work session and go straight into the agenda meeting. And since we've got plenty of time, we'll kind of go through these in here. Five and six are file adoption ordinance for annexation. Hunter, Buford, who's going to be handling those?
These come straight to counsel, so if we can answer any questions, we might have...
Counsel, I'll give you an opportunity now to ask any questions about numbers five and six. And obviously, you'll have another opportunity if you choose to ask during the meeting itself. All right. Number seven, who's going to talk about number seven? Come on.
Thank you, counsel. This was originally a three-year contract, and it was composed of two parts. One was implementation, one was further support. Online zoning code is hosted, zoning map is hosted, and then some data is hosted in the cloud, and kind of gives us a connection to the county's GIS data. It was front-loaded the first year in payments, and part of the project was tied GIS into munis. That didn't happen. We were now, I think you've heard of Intergov that we approved last month. They are willing to honor the front-loaded portion and get that tied into Intergov, and just keep the maintenance going. So it's an additional year of maintenance, but we'll supply that we've already paid for.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. All right. Number eight, Civic Center stage repairs.
This was unfortunately one of those lingering projects that COVID kind of got in the way of, and the folks at Civic Center had asked us to get that back online, so we got you updated quotes. As I understand, that is a budgeted. Stage's got a couple of issues. One, it's got some structural support issues, so this involves putting some knee walls and some additional structure underneath it, as well as resurfacing it. And you can see all the information there in your packet. You know, the current surface has been sanded down so much that it's, there's not much left of it, so...
And this, according to my sheet, it looks like it's under budget by about $24,000 change, which is...
That's what I understand, yes.
Always, always good news.
Will there be further work done that's going to tap into this budget, or is this all the work?
I do not under, I don't know. Maybe Jessica knows.
All the work?
That was, yeah, this is it.
Okay, that's good. That's real good.
It's a good, it's a good...
I just got them prices. I don't know what their budget was.
All right. Just so everybody else knows, we're on number eight, and we've saved $24,000. Let's, everybody, keep that momentum going. You're on, you're on the clock now. All right. So, Richard, you have number 36, too?
Yes, and this has been long awaited. We've been working, and Council President was gracious enough, says, "Don't wait for another third quote. Get us, get us the two before you." But this is to fix the roof at the K1 center, and you see the low price there to do that.
And so, looking at my sheet again here, this says it was budgeted at $135 for a savings of $98,000.
Yep, but in, in full disclosure, y'all placed 135 for just any contingency that may come up with K1, so it just wasn't for roof, so...
I'm going to pretend that we just saved $98,000.
All right. I'm okay with that, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Number 10 is that City of Fairhope approves the procurement of 424 meters for the gas department to be purchased from Elster America Meter Company.
So for the next three, they're all for the gas department. We have the 434 meters, and then the number 11 is for the ERTs, so that we can read them with our billing system. And then number 12 is for regulators. And the numbers are different on the regulators is because we already have some meters in our warehouse, so we're just getting enough regulators to be able to have complete sets when we go to install the services. So that's why there's a little bit difference between the regulators and the 424 for the other meters in ERTs. And then number 13 is for the water department, for some chemicals. The zinc, don't ask me to say that, and that's mostly a corrosion inhibitor that's used at the water treatment plants.
Mike, are these budgeted items?
They should be budgeted under just normal maintenance.
Okay. All right. Guys, anybody got any questions for Mike on numbers 10 through 13?
Then also I have number 19.
All right.
That's in our metering department. It was an admin position that would be in the office that they converted to a field employee, as they were, the workload had shifted to more, needing more help out in the field. So the change in that job description to the field audit technician.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Number 14, City of Fairhope has voted to procure the city's munis, software, annual maintenance, and licensing fees for the IT department.
Just a annual renewal of our munis system support.
Is this the, this the expected cost, Jeff?
It is.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? All right. Number 15, City of Fairhope has voted to renew, to the renewal of three-year master service agreement with Everbridge Emergency Notification System for the IT department. Same deal?
Same deal.
All right. 16 is that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase a 2024 Ford F-150 super cab, four-by-two pickup truck for the planning department.
Good afternoon, counsel. That's a budgeted purchase replacing an older vehicle.
All right. Number 17 is that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement for a 20-foot storage container for storage of ammunition for the police department for the cost of $11,900.
This is also a budgeted item. It was originally, the building we originally wanted to go with was about $40,000, so we went back to the drawing board and discovered that we could use a different building. It would serve the purpose, and it's a lot cheaper.
So you could save $28,000.
Yes.
See, y'all are killing it today.
Does this building have to have HVAC in it?
It does.
It does?
It's completely insulated, heating and air.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. All right. Number 18 is a resolution authorizing the mayor or council president to execute and deliver an agreement between the volunteer fire department and the City of Fairhope. Chief?
Yes, sir.
What are we agreeing to here?
It's just an updating of the agreement we've had over the last several years. It's just actually doing the paperwork for it, so... Services? Services, services provided to the city. And it states what both sides are going to do, so...
You promised to keep putting out our fires.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Counsel, anybody got any questions for number 18? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number 20 is that the city council hereby amends resolution number 3785-20 to add the following. Due to COVID-19 capacity restrictions and social distancing requirements, the city council finds that a public purpose is being served by the use of the council chambers and AV broadcast for citizens. Who is that?
This is an amendment to the prior resolution for the forum that was...
Campus set campaign.
It has that charismatic language that lawyers don't like.
Lawyers are the worst. All right. Anybody got any questions on number 20?
No.
All right. And then, so we have 20 current agenda items, and then we have a request... And then, so we have 20 current agenda items, and then we have a request, which we'll discuss at the beginning of the actual meeting, to add numbers 21 and 22.
23.
Oh, and 23, which would be to declare those tables surplus. Marcus, we, did you, were you drafting some?
I need to ask, who is it that I'm looking at doing three, donating, donating three charities that for us?
So, I think...
I think we just decided to do...
To declare them...
Surplus and then let...
And then to be divvied up between Fairhope Rotary Youth and then the schools as the need arises.
Any idea how many tables there are?
There's eight. So, I mean, if you divvy it up between everybody, everybody gets one picnic table, that doesn't do anything.
Well, you know, it may be one of those things that if we, I mean, if we made them in-house, and I don't, I hate creating work for people, but if we made them in-house for a relatively discounted price and we could figure out a way to, assuming it's legal, to help the schools provide some outdoor picnic areas so that they could social distance during lunchtime or in some way, then that might be something we'd be willing to fund, or at least I'd be willing to vote for. So if that's really a need in all these places and we can figure out a way to help, then I'd be in favor of that also.
You got eight, can you pass them all, donate eight, declare the surplus, donating them to the charitable organization, the schools, which we normally donate to, Fairhope...
Rotary Youth Club.
We also donate to, I just, I mean, it's a little bit easier if you've got kind of a...
Even, split, yeah. Well, I mean, Jimmy's proposal was to split them half and half, and I'm, I got no problem with that. And then if...
If other people want them, would you...
If other people want them, then we can...
Build more and donate them?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Is that something you can do or not?
No, that's surplus. Drive.
Mayor, do you know if the Rotary Youth could use eight tables, or would that be just...
They said that they could use whatever they can get, but we can communicate, we didn't have the count when I had that conversation. I just knew looking out at what we had, I mean, it's, it's dangerous, some are broken, and there's no seating out there, so... And this is where people, adults come to...
Local schools, etc.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's good.
Another point, too, is that this is not for a school, this is a public park for all citizens, and the adults are the ones that are going to probably use the picnic tables the most.
Yeah, well, let's find out what the Rotary Youth Club needs, and then if they need all eight, then they can have all eight. And then our schools need some, that sounds like a good weekend project for some grownups to want to help out a little bit. I'm willing to supervise. My building skills aren't necessarily up to, up to par, but I'm willing to bring refreshments and encouragement for anybody that wants to help, so...
If I pinch my finger, can I get your services?
You got it. All right, well, that's it for the agenda session. We'll, we'll take a break and come back shortly before 6 for start of the meeting.